Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair.
We're called to order the Planning Commission's special meeting on May 26, 2021. We have roll call.
Commissioner Whitren.
Present.
Commissioner Wadilla.
Here.
Commissioner Ramoni.
Here.
Commissioner Prickett.
Here.
Commissioner Wilcox.
Here.
Commissioner Allen, he let us know he would not be here this evening. Chair Stephenson.
Mr. Stephenson will likely not be here this evening.
All right, now we have form.
We'll have the pleasurable agents.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none? We'll have Chris read the public hearing procedures.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Have the run document pulled up, Mr. Chair, so forgive me one moment while I pull it up. You are not the historical landmarks commission. Matters for tonight's meeting are as followed. Case file LU-0005-2021, T-Mobile Tower Modification, a Type III application, and case file 71-01, Housing Needs Analysis Adoption, Type IV Application. Before we begin the hearing for tonight's agenda items, I would like to explain a little bit about the Planning Commission and the procedure we will be following for the public hearing. The Planning Commission is an appointed seven-member volunteer body of Troutdale citizens, member of the commission are Troutdale residents who have been appointed by the city council. They serve alternating terms. They are strictly volunteers and receive no pay for their services. The Planning Commission serves as a citizen committee for the review of certain land use applications within the city. Items which the Planning Commission consider include uses of lands, subdivisions, major variances, land use policy plans and development regulations. For some land use applications, the commission makes a final decision. For other applications, they are simply making a recommendation to city council who renders the final commission, uh, final decision. Planning Commission public hearings are held in accordance with Oregon law and procedures contained in the Troutdale Development Code. The hearing proceeds as follows. City staff will present the report, which will include applicable criteria and standards for the matter under consideration in the application. All testimony and evidence should be directed toward these criteria. If you believe other criteria in the comprehensive plan, development code, or other city land use regulations apply, you must identify these criteria and explain why they apply to the decision. The chair will open the hearing to accept public testimony relating to the application. The applicant will be invited to speak first, followed by proponents, then by opponents, and then by any parties neutral to the application. An opportunity will be provided to anyone testifying to clarify any issues raised, and the applicant does have the right of rebuttal. Oregon land use law requires all issues raised by a participant during the public hearing must be sufficiently clear and specific to allow the Planning Commission and other parties an opportunity to respond to the issues. Failure to raise an issue during this public hearing may invalidate a future appeal based on the issue. Prior to the closing of the public hearing, any participant may request an opportunity provide to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. Planning Commission must grant the request by either continuing the public hearing to a future date, or by leaving the record open for at least seven days to admit additional written evidence or testimony. If the record is left open for additional written evidence, arguments, or testimony, any participant may file a written request for an opportunity to respond to new evidence submitted during the period the record was left open. If such a request is filed, the Planning Commission shall reopen the hearing to allow any person to raise new issues which relate to the new evidence, testimony, or criteria or decision-making. As a final note, public hearings are recorded at the appropriate time. Please come forward to the table or indicate you would like to speak via Zoom and state your name and address for the record. Please do speak clearly into microphone if you're in the room, and please, if you are at home and wish to speak, make sure you're unmuted, and for those of you who are not speaking, please mute yourselves if you can. And before we open the hearing, Mr. Chair, the staff would ask, does any member have an ex parte contact or bias to declare? If so, please clearly state for the record the substance of the contact.
Any ex parte?
I do. Bonnie Lynn is a neighbor. She lives near me. We, we haven't seen each other like for a while, but we have no, I have not had any contact with her recently on this matter or any man.
Oh, Chris, Chair Wadilla.
Mr. Wilcox.
Uh, yes, I don't have any ex parte, but I wanted to confirm my status for tonight's meeting since I missed the first hearing a month ago. I, I did listen to the entire audio of that meeting and have all the backup material.
Would you brief all the material?
Yes, I read all the material.
Okay.
Uh, does any member have any potential or actual conflict of interest? If so, would you please state for the record the nature of the conflict of interest?
Sounds like none.
And does anyone in the audience wish to challenge the right of any commissioner to hear this matter?
I hear none.
Okay. This is a, the first hearing is a continuation of a hearing which was begun on April 28th of 2021. The staff is prepared to provide an additional report, and the applicant intends to provide some additional information.
Would staff want to go first or the applicant first?
We'll, we'll go ahead and defer to staff first, and then the applicant will provide it, and we're ready to open the hearing.
Go ahead.
Okay, hearing is open.
Hearing is open.
All right. Can everyone at home see a screen that says LU-0005-2021? Okay. Great, thank you. Okay, this is again the T-Mobile Cell Tower Modification, Conditional Use Application, continuation of the hearing from April 28th for tonight, the 26th. Staff is not going to spend a tremendous amount of time on its update. We do have the original presentation as well as the original draft findings available that we can pull up on screen if any commissioner or member of the public wishes to pull them up. What we wanted to focus on tonight was also the contents with the, of the app, of the packet that you received, the additional information. So we do have information tonight that was provided in the packets. The applicant is intending to provide additional information tonight, which may be of interest to the committee as well, to the commission as well as interested members of the public. Staff will go first, followed by the applicant. There would be public testimony, proponents, opponents, neutral parties. The applicant again has the right of rebuttal. You can close the hearing. Planning Commission can continue the hearing or make a decision tonight. You are the decision-making entity. This is a Type III application tonight. The additional information we provided in the packet were minutes from the 2008 Planning Commission meeting slash hearing. That was the meeting when the tower in question was originally approved for conditional use. It should be noted, it was not a unanimous decision. It was a five-two vote in favor of the application at the time. Also included in the packet was FCC fact sheet from May 20th of 2020, which briefly documented the concerns about substantial change and whether or not this constituted a substantial change as far as the FCC requirements, as well as an FCC ruling on local government approvals. After the packet was published, the applicant provided some additional information on an exposure study. However, I would caution before we introduce that information, the applicant may have information they're prepared tonight to present, which may alter that study a little bit as far as the actual situation that could occur. So I will defer to the applicant to give his chance to do that when we get the chance. So I want to talk at first about this FCC ruling, the Federal Communications Commission ruling. A state or a local government shall approve within 60 days any request for modification to an existing wireless tower or base station that does not substantially change the physical dimensions of such tower or base. The FCC defines the term eligible facilities request as any request for modification of an existing tower or base station that does not substantially change physical dimensions of such tower or base station involving three factors, the collection, co-location rather, of new transmission equipment, removal of transmission equipment, or the replacement of transmission equipment. The FCC rules provide that changes are substantial if they are one of four factors. Exceed defined limits on increases in the height or girth of the structure or the number associated equipment cabinets. It involves any excavation. It involves deployment on ground outside of structure's current site or defeat the concealment elements of the pre-existing structure. And the fourth, which we highlighted, violate conditions previously imposed by the local zoning authority. That is probably the principal concern for you all in order for you to have confidence to make a decision one way or the other. In the packet, we did provide the minutes of the meeting where you could see some discussion. On the screen here were the conditions of approval that were approved as part of the conditional use application from 2008. They are here on screen. Of the ones, of the 14 conditions, and there's a second page here, but of the 14 conditions that you see here. I'll go back to this one. Please pay attention to condition number one. The monopole shall be engineered, designed, and constructed so as to allow the co-location of additional antennae in the future. Maximum height of the monopole shall be 100 feet. That is the, probably the primary concerning factor for tonight's meeting as, and for this hearing altogether. Some of the other factors are more applicable to the actual construction of the tower itself, about talking about permits, FCC guidelines, erosion control. That's really talking more about the specifics of the tower's construction. So what we're getting at here is we, as a staff, are still maintaining a recommendation of approval from the application as presented thus far. We don't believe that there have been any conditions of approval that have been violated. So if by FCC definition, therefore, this is not a substantial change, and therefore we are obligated potentially legally to approve this application in due time, unless the tower itself or the design of the tower changes, then we would have to consider a new application altogether. One thing I would remind also the Planning Commission, because this was a question that came up a month ago, is, you know, can we do something to the tower? Are we able to do, you know, place certain conditions? Remind you that if the tower doesn't have the ability to be dressed up, for lack of a better phrase, or if, if there are certain things that prevent from an engineering perspective any improvements, visual aesthetic or otherwise to the tower itself, you still have the ability to place conditions on the property that the tower sits on, and that could include screening or landscaping, and those are conditions that planning staff has already suggested in its conditions of approval. You can choose to elevate them or make them stronger, if so desired, but it's going to be difficult potentially based on our reading and our understanding of the design of the pole to potentially do that unless it's going to be radically considered, or unless the applicant suggests otherwise tonight. So again, we present this information on the information that we've received thus far. My understanding is that the applicant is prepared to provide some additional or new information tonight, which may change some of the information we've provided thus far. But before we bring the applicant up, do, does anyone have any questions for staff at this point?
Anyone have any questions?
Yes. Commissioner Whitren, go ahead, please. So back to substantial change with the addition of the antennas sticking out across the top. You, staff does not feel that that is additional girth? That is not substantial enough?
Girth would be applied to the pole structure itself based on our understanding of the FCC ruling.
So the girth of the antennas do not apply?
Yeah, I might add here on the minutes of 521 in 2008, page eight. There's a sentence, "It's typical for a tower to be built, but then other companies collate on the same tower, and this tower will accommodate other users," that imply from the onset, there was an intent to adding towers, or rather.
Okay.
Go ahead, let me know.
Commissioner Ramoni, I think.
Yes, yes, thank you very much. Chris, I appreciate the comments here. I just clarify much more for me, but I thought, I think, if I recall correctly, at the end of our comprehensive conversation last month, the outstanding question that we were posing, if I remember, we were expecting an answer through the, the office of the city attorney was, does the planning commission have jurisdiction to impose a sunset date by which, as a condition? The commission obviously has the ability to impose condition, but do we have also, do within, do we have the authority to impose a sunset date? Because with the conversation at a certain point took a tangent, it was, maybe we can ask the applicant, again, I don't, I don't feel there is a substantial change. I agree with this top report, but my concern was about the logistics of so close to residential. The conversation, if you remember correctly, was, let's figure out if we have the ability to impose a condition by which we put a sunset. We give 10 years to the applicant to stay at the church, but within 10 years, we sunset this location, and then I was affording the organization, the department by the city, to review his ordinances, to see if we would establish different kind of ordinance for location of this cellular tower, which obviously are relevant, but maybe in a society in the location what we have right now. And we've been able to get an answer there, because to me, that was the focal point of what I was anticipating to hear today. Either positive yay or nay from the city attorney, where, I'm sorry, commissioner, the, the, the planning commission has wide authority, but not to impose a sunset date, which, which would break with precedents that I'm familiar with.
Sure, and the answer to that is no. There is no sunset ability that we would have. What, if a decision is rendered and it's done within the confines of the existing code at the time, the city, Planning Commission ultimately, city council has always the ability to change a code, you know, if it wishes to impose standards, or, you know, in many ways, it can, as you know, it can affect change by grandfathering or non-conforming structures that it wishes to ultimately see be modified, changed, or done away with. But it, it cannot place a condition of approval that sunsets its valid nature if there's nothing in the development code that suggests it has the ability to. So since the code does not expressly allow it, it cannot expressly be done.
Okay, so the, I appreciate that, because there's a clear subtle, subtle definition, yeah. So because the, the, the current code, as stated, does not allow the planning commission to, in their condition, in the wide latitude of a condition to impose a sunset date, to say, we approve you, but all over 14 years or for 15 years or whatever, then the, the answer is no, we cannot, even though this is a new case, because the case, the, the decision 2008 is relevant, but is relevant to a certain point, because today we're in front of you, and we're a completely different case, and my potential by, might be in oppo, in opposition to what was established and decided 2008. But as we know right now, we don't have that latitude.
Right.
Very, very well. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Is there any other commissioner with questions from staff? None? We'll have the applicant come forward.
Okay, and please remember to state your name for the record.
Yes.
And I believe the applicant, did you send me a link that you wish to display on the screen, or?
Did I send you a, an email?
It was an email, okay.
It was a link to, um, we'll get to the point if you can.
Okay, give me one moment while I pull that up.
Yeah, thank you. So commissioners, it's nice to be speaking with you again, a month after the last hearing. I'm here, there, there are two issues that.
Sorry, Tom, can you state your name and address?
Oh, sorry, my name is Tom McCollough. My address is 15349 Southwest Mallard Drive, Unit 102, Beaverton, Oregon, 97007. Last month, when, after the hearing, there was two issues that y'all seemed to be pretty concerned about, and it also raised my concern, because I couldn't speak to them. For first reason, everyone, there was a lot of concerns about our permissions. I don't have a professionalism. I can tell you that T-Mobile may not exceed the federal bulletin 65. Okay, sorry. But I don't have the professional backing to, to back what I said. So I requested that T-Mobile have somebody come and speak with you professionally. I believe Bill Hammett's on Zoom. Are you there, Bill? Well, it's, I mean, Bill Hammett is from Hammond.
Yes. You're him.
Thank you. He's an independent third-party engineer with expertise in the field of compliance for safety regulations. So T-Mobile has asked him to speak on their behalf. He, he can speak to the federal rules and regulations from a place of authority, rather than I talk about it just from a place of.
Okay, if you would.
Certainly, good evening. My name is Bill Hammett. I'm a registered professional engineer in California and other states, including Oregon at, from time to time. I manage a firm of 18. We're located in the San Francisco area, and a regular part of our professional practice is the calculation or the measurement of radio frequency exposure conditions. That's been my principal focus for 35 years, and at that time, we've done more than 20,000 site evaluations, and McGraw-Hill has published my book on this topic. As engineers, our job is really straightforward. What are the exposure levels, and how do they compare to the standards? And since we deal just in facts, we work across the field for carriers, for cities and, and counties, for neighborhood groups. The, the numbers are what they are. And what we've done in this case is study the materials that were submitted to you by T-Mobile for the drawings, what antennas are proposed, where are they going to be located, what, how much power are they going to run? And we projected what the maximum exposure levels would be for anybody in the area. For anybody at ground, the number would be 1.4% of the exposure limit. And I say the exposure limit, I'll, I'll mention a little bit more about that in a moment, but we know that's a conservative number. It's got several estimating factors in it that are, are conservative. At any nearby residence on the second floor, it's 1.8%. Again, we know it's going to be something less than that. So there's no question that this facility will comply with the federal standards. You know, there are few guarantees in life, but I can make a guarantee that as designed, this facility will comply with the federal standard. And to the issue of, of your, your consideration of that, it was an act of Congress in 1996 that declared that a local jurisdiction cannot apply anything tighter than the SEC standard. That is, the cities typically require the carriers or radio station or whoever it is with a proposal, they require them to demonstrate that they will comply with the, with the safety standard. And if they do, that's just a threshold condition, and local jurisdictions cannot consider the perceived or the perceived health effects as the rationale for rejecting the operation or modification of a facility. That's really short and sweet, right to the point. I understand that the report I issued dated Monday is, is available to you in your packets, and available to answer any question you have on, on the report itself, or on any other aspect in terms of operation of antennas and cell, cell systems and, and the like.
Yeah, if I may interrupt a moment, is that report in our package?
The report did not make the packet deadline. It is now being shared on your screen here. You'll see the executive summary box, but they did not meet the deadline to include it in the packet, so it's being, I have a paper copy for you, Mr. Chair, here. If I have anybody in the crowd, and it's here on the screen as well.
I have 15 copies.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, just because I know this is a five-page report, there is an executive summary box on the front, which summarizes the presentation just given, as well as on page three in the middle, a conclusionary statement, along with the engineer stamp and seal from Mr. Hammett.
Commissioners have an opportunity to scan over this, read over it, and any questions?
I can bring it back on screen, commissioners, my apologies. And just for the benefit, I'll go back to page one here real quick.
Any commissioners have any questions of the applicant regarding this? Got to see none? You have anything more to add?
Uh, yes, I mean, whatever stating that, at the last meeting, at the last hearing, there were two, two issues that were spoken about a lot and with some passion. One was the EMF, the EMF emissions, and the other was the aesthetics of the proposed design for the structure. I, I spoke with AT&amp;T, or not AT&amp;T, spoke with T-Mobile, and I got them to agree to do something for the neighborhood. I said, you don't, if you're going to be, if you're going to be a part of the neighborhood, you need to be a good partner in the neighborhood. So they have agreed to do a modify. And I don't know, I, again, I didn't come prepared for that. I got the, I got bored of it at, oh, thank you. You got bored of it at 4:00 P.M. But these pictures here, the, the directors putting up on the screen, there's some that are good, there are some that are not good. But they've become a lot better. In the 20 years of this, being in this business, there have been some very un, they don't look like, you know, they don't look like, they don't look like pine trees. They just look mon, like monopoles with little things hanging off of them. But can you, the one of, it's the top right corner. This is the best example of what sites look like these days. The antennas are there, they're semi-visible, but the commission can require us to paint it the same color as the foliage, the, the full foliage that's on the tower, that way minimizing any visibility to it. I mean, aesthetics, I think this is a very good, good solution to the problem. In order to, in order to supply a network to our. a network to our customers, we need to be able to provide antennas and our radios, basically, that get a hook behind the antennas for broadcasting and receiving. So that's, that design, to me, is more appealing than what is proposed right now by T-Mobile. And that's one thing, this is, if this does get approved, T-Mobile guarantees that they will put plants together, provides something of this nature. Sorry, trying to get these things in my face. But, I mean, I can, do you have questions for me? I don't know how to go about it.
Any Commissioners have any questions of the applicant?
Mr. Chair, if I may.
If you will.
If this is going, and this is directed now to the applicant, this is an applicant question. If the intent of T-Mobile is to move forward and commit to a monopine, as you described it, design, that fundamentally changes the application, meaning that facts have to be reconsidered, as well as findings have to be reconsidered. If that is the direction, and if you truly have the authority from T-Mobile and from your company to work with the city on this, it's probably in your best interest to withdraw this current application rather than expect a ruling for it, because simply put, the facts of the matter have changed, as well as potential testimony from an applicant and from neighbors would change as well. Our recommendation would be to work with staff, come up with a design, and then, much like we did with this application, it would be a conditional use modification, but therefore, it's a new application tied with a new design that generates new feedback and commentary from neighboring property owners, since this is new information that, again, changes this application.
I mean, I know the shot clock from the federal government kind of puts a limit on you, head of here, the 63 days from time of application to approval.
But what we're saying is that.
I know, and that's what I'm saying, is that you're saying that right now, everything, the situation has changed. I haven't provided enough evidence to support any yea or nay from the city or from the residents. So I think that's fair.
Okay, so do we have it with your authority? And you'll need to say it as a declarative sentence, that you wish to withdraw this application and come back to the planning commission with a new, a de novo application, and we're going to see a monopole, excuse me, a monopine application as suggested here. Because I just want to be very clear, if you do that, understand there will not be a decision, and this, and our planning commission will have to treat it as a de novo application.
Okay, yeah. Again, my name is Tom McCollough, I'm with SBA Communications, we own the tower, and we will withdraw this application to submit one in the future, in the near future, for a monopine.
Okay, it's, I think that's an appropriate action, so it is withdrawn?
Yes.
Okay.
And you'll submit a new application?
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Chair, you just need to close the hearing on the cases.
Close the hearing.
Thank you.
Motion to close the hearing?
I move that we close the hearing.
I'll second that.
We've got a motion, a second, closing hearing on case number 0052021, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
And for folks who are on the call, especially folks who are not on the planning commission, a clarification would be, no decision was made tonight on the design as proposed. A new design would be forwarded to the city for review, and much like you were notified for this current case, you will be notified of the new case if you are within the geographic boundary of the case. Decision tonight, freshly comment on a new application, yes, ma'am? It'll be a fresh notification, yes.
Same process will be followed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing you in two months or so.
Okay.
We'll be in touch. Mr. Chair, we did advise a couple of people who had an interest in the next agenda item, that this first agenda item would have taken longer than expected. Staff is requesting a recess till 8:00 and pick up the second application at 8:00, if that is okay.
We'll recess until 8:00. I don't think that requires a motion.
Okay. We'll stop, we'll stop recording, we'll keep the meeting open, though. Okay, Mr. Chair, I believe we're live.
Okay, the trout, the planning commission special meeting made 26/21 is now back in session. We should probably have a roll call, make sure everybody's back on.
Believe you're muted, Amber.
Interesting, maybe I was unmuted this whole time. Commissioner Witrin?
Here.
Commissioner Wadilla?
Here.
Commissioner Mamoné?
Yeah.
Commissioner Prickett?
Here.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Here.
And Commissioners Allen and Staffenson, I don't believe they've joined us.
Okay, we'll open case file number 7101, housing analysis.
This has been through some modifications to comply with Oregon administrative rule, and the staff will cover what those changes are. Yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, again, this is a continuation of the hearing we began two weeks ago. This is involving a comprehensive land use plan amendment, which is a fancy way of saying updating our comp plan. And this is in regards to the city's housing needs analysis, which was written and mostly published in 2019, and then formally adopted by City Council Resolution. We believe we were set. This body, as well as a couple of additions, worked pretty hard on that, and we believe we had a good working document in compliance with state standard and state rulemaking. We were informed by DLCD, as were a number of communities who adopted their housing need analysis by resolution, that the housing needs analysis actually had to be adopted by ordinance. So we are back to the drawing board now and going through the ordinance process, which in this case also involves updating our comp plan and Goal 10 in particular, which is the housing goal, both at the local and at the state. So we did introduce and went through the staff report at our last meeting, I will try to hit the high points again, just as a reminder. Again, this is a Type 4 hearing, you folks are making a recommendation to City Council, you are not the actual decision-making entity. If you do decide to vote on it tonight, or vote for a recommendation, one way or the other, tonight, would go to City Council on June 9th, on June 23rd, if I have my dates correct. Either June 8th or June 22nd, on Tuesday, it's June 8th and June 22nd. So again, a housing needs analysis is a required document by the state. It is a, basically, thinks inventory of city's housing policies, as well as inventories, the land through what we call a buildable lands inventory. And it determines whether or not a city has proper housing strategies and policies moving forward that it can maintain, and will supply housing for all income levels, or at least a 20-year period. There were changes to state law a couple of years ago with House Bill 2003, which required cities now to begin updating their housing needs analyses every six years. For Troutdale, it had been almost 10 years since its last one, and that was during the periodic review process that several of you went through in 2011 through 2014. What the report found largely was that Troutdale's housing supply is in good shape. We have ample opportunity and ample land, and the city had to develop about 720 housing units over the next 20-year period to fulfill its state obligations. The city hired a contractor, Eco-Northwest, to perform the analysis. They have a reputation for doing these well and ensuring that we're in performance with state law and state rules. They have informed us, and they did show in the report that we were in performance. So we thought we were all good, but here we are, and here we are adopting the same document. There's been no substantive change to the document itself. What we are changing, though, is some of the text within Goal 10 and the I'm going to go to those comp plan particular sections, and then I'll come back to the approval criteria of that. So we're going to switch over to the comp plan section. One moment while I get back up to that section. I'm not going to cover the entirety of the housing needs analysis tonight, although if there are any questions from members of the public, I'll be happy to bring it up. So this is a redline version of the Goal 10 section in the comp plan. You'll see that we have strike throughs as well as insertions, they're all marked in red. Insertions are underlined, strike throughs are struck through. And you'll see that several sections that exist right now, demographics, for housing inventory, future housing need, are struck through with a notation that an entire section to be struck through now covered in a new housing needs analysis. So effectively, it's going to be a reference document that is officially adopted, much like how we handle our transportation system plan is a reference document, but it is functionally part of our comprehensive plan, same principle. There is a neighborhood density section that exists that we will intend to maintain. It talks about things within the 2040 metro growth concept, this is a section not to be fiddled with. We suggest you maintain it the way it is. We do add a notice in there about accessory dwelling units, which is adopted by our code and allowed per state law. We added a quote, about 80. Also a former buildable lands inventory reference that has been struck through in its entirety because the new buildable lands inventory is contained within the new housing needs analysis. And so we have inserted a section called Housing Needs Analysis, and just with a placement statement saying, what does it contain? And here's where you find the information. Elsewhere in the section, there are a list of policies and goals that were established at the time of the last amendment that people went through during periodic review. None of the goals are changed. And none of the goals need to change if this housing needs analysis and this amendment process goes through. None of the goals that you have outlined in your comp plan will need to change for at least six years. That's one of the motivations for getting this done by June 30th, is to not have to go through that exercise to change your goals and policies. So the goals and policies that are currently listed in here will remain. The reference document that helps shape those goals and policies, which quite frankly are rather timeless, will remain in place. Are there any questions about the text of the comprehensive plan that we are proposing to amend with this application?
Commissioners, have any questions?
Second, my presentation is going to cover our findings, which have been prepared, as with any land use application, we have to develop findings. And these were presented initially, but we're going to go through them again tonight, since we have a few people who were not on the call last time. When you're doing a comp plan amendment, you have three decision criteria. The first being compliance with the statewide land use goals. We've developed findings that say we submitted the amendments, DLCD, to determine compliance. We believe we have, certainly a contractor who believes they have and provide that deliverable to us. Several references to Oregon provides statutes and administrative rules, and those are actually the big ones. The HNA itself. The report also goes a step further and highlights and provides recent and prospective development, which further demonstrates and underscores the city's commitment to address housing need in our community, and frankly, in our region. Troutdale is doing its fair share and more, as far as accommodating what the state has told us we need to accommodate for. We believe the criteria. Public need is best satisfied by this particular change. What we say here is that the city's Goal 10 standards have not been updated in nearly a decade, and we recognize the fact, and we understand that we need to do more regular checks. And now the state has told us, you must do these checks now every six years. So by adopting it in 2021, in 2027, we would be in line for adopting it along with most of other communities that are scheduled. But since 2011, effectively, Troutdale's housing dynamics have changed, as has our situation at the Job Center, as has the dynamic in Portland and Ingression and the surrounding areas as far as housing prices, so demand, desire, and regulations have changed. We're a little bit unique in our suburban environment along the periphery of the metro region, because we do not have urban reserves like, say, Gresham or Hillsborough or Sherwood or some of these other peripheral communities, so we really don't have any place we can grow into. So apart from some unincorporated pockets that we have. So we have to be very mindful and logical and intelligent about as soon as we make the housing. So we, in our buildable lands inventory, tells us, though, we still have sufficient housings, or land supply to accommodate the housing. The housing need is calculated from census data, but ultimately from population growth data and projections from Portland State University. And they projected 720 housing units would need to be accommodated over the next 20 years. So doing this, having up-to-date information and understanding truly what our finite supply of land is, is in the public interest. So we believe the criterion is met for this regard by having a more up-to-date and robust housing need analysis. The change to the comp plan will not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the community. We state that Troutdale is a predominantly residential community, and available buildable lands are highlighted in the report and can develop accordingly with minimal negative potential impacts. We're very fortunate, unlike a lot of communities, and we have a clear segregation of land uses, where we have a largely industrial north area, a kind of freeway-oriented commercial area downtown, and then even a commercial strip along Stark, but we have really larger, well-defined residential areas of development in that regard. Several of the more impactful properties that are highlighted in the show are in fact proximate to commercial land uses and they pay frontages to collector or arterial roads. In many cases, they are already appropriately zoned for medium or high-density residential. It encourages a more intelligent and efficient use of land, and it allows for a lower cost impact to the city for providing services. One thing that has been increasingly called out, and one thing the state increasingly is requiring cities to address, is the issue of housing affordability. And we did address it, and it's the development of affordable housing, particularly for those populations within some below 50% of the area median income is important.
Chris, sorry to interjecting you, could you please load down a second? I'm having a problem hearing you, your voice goes on and off, and then you're going a little too fast.
Okay.
We miss words.
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm going to take my mask off, and I hope Mr. Wadilla will.
Appreciate, thank you.
Allow me to do that. Okay, the development of affordable housing in particular, something the state requires us really to address head-on. In our area, the housing need analysis to find a need for us to address housing for populations of 50% of the area median income or below. The information here you see in red is an addition, is additional language from your original packet and the original finding that we had in the packet. We've been told, and we were provided commentary from the Fair Housing Council of Oregon, that we needed to expand our finding on this to be more in line with the state expectation for factual basis. So we've provided some additional information on how we believe our housing policies. our housing strategy, and frankly, the delivery of new housing, how that has affected or not negatively affected the potential to develop housing for all income levels. So what we're basically saying here is that, look, we are already on track. We're halfway to our twenty forty goal in twenty twenty-one. We are looking at potentially even upzoning or allowed higher densities, maybe in the Confluence property. That's the U R A next to downtown, where we could have a denser environment there. We know that we'll be having to work with Home Forward potentially on the Home Forward project, which will look to address specifically housing, affordable housing for that particular income group. So the city is not shying away from its expectations, and because of those actions, is addressing them head-on. And the remaining buildable lands that are available to us can be used for a variety of purposes and a variety of housing types. And that's the other thing, too. We're not just cranking out single-family homes. Most of our recent development has actually been so-called middle housing, the townhomes, attached homes, things of that nature, or apartments, either at the market rate or potentially income-restricted level. So the city is certainly doing its share and is developing housing to the market that the expectation and the trends of housing are suggesting it needs to do so. So we believe we're in compliance and that the criterion is met here, that this housing needs analysis calls us to do things that we are already doing or accomplishing, accomplishing. So our ultimate recommendation to you, to recommend to city council, is that you should recommend approval of these changes. The document produced last year has not substantially changed. It is the same document that council adopted last year. And the only difference is you are now placing notice in the comp plan, and council adopts it by ordinance rather than by resolution. So if the facts haven't changed since last year, this document should still be good, and this body, I will remind you, also recommended approval of the H and A last year to council before the resolution went into effect. With that, I'll be happy to take any questions. I know that was a lot of information.
Yes, Chris. Thank you. So just to be sure, once, once the planning commission approves this case file, then the council will adopt the housing needs analysis by ordinance, is establishing a policy. That's why by ordinance, of course.
And you can recommend denial if you so choose, but council decisions on binding, of course.
Actually, you know, I, I might jump the gun. I don't know when my colleague spills, what is the sentiment, but I'm ready to put a motion on the table right now. And then, and then, no, conversation can, can still go on, but I would like to put a motion on the table at this point. Is that acceptable? Great.
I think we have to close the, the, the public hearing.
Very well. Yes, you're right. I'm really jumping guns here.
Are there any other comments or questions from the commissioners? Then a motion to close the public hearing.
Well, we have to also check for public comment as well.
Is there anybody in the audience have any comments? I hear none.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
You got a motion, a second, and close the public hearing. All those in favor signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And do we have a motion to move this forward?
I will make a motion that we approve case file seven one dash zero one for a recommendation for city council.
I second.
Motion and second, and are we taking the whole package on this motion?
I think. With the findings as adopt, as, as written, or?
Yeah, as written.
Okay. A roll call.
Commissioner Whitren.
Yes.
Commissioner Wadilla.
Yes.
Commissioner Momoney.
Yes.
Commissioner Prickett.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox.
Yes.
And the other two aren't present.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you, planning commissioners. And again, the matter will be before city council for first reading on June eighth, and then second reading, June twenty-second, as scheduled.
And staff, any, Kenny Martin?
Yes, just, just a couple of quick notes. Your next meeting is going to be on June ninth. We have another big meeting. We're going to have two type four hearings. One will be a map amendment and text amendment combination for the Confluence property, for the rezoning of that property, as well as the establishment of a new zoning district, something we've talked about in a few meetings past. The other will be a text amendment for, and another item we've, we've briefly talked about in work session, a text amendment for age-restricted housing and potential breaks in the development code on certain things. So those will be the two items you have on the ninth. You'll have another meeting on the twenty-third, and then I think we're back to one meeting per month through the summer. So we'll try to make sure your docket is what it is, but as people keep applying, it's one of those things that we'll, we just have to accommodate, and we don't want to be stretching you all to eleven or midnight, trying to hammer out three or four applications. So we appreciate your service. Chair wanted to communicate to you all, he was sorry he was unable to attend tonight. He had a, a situation come up that he needed to attend to during the day, and he wishes to say hello, and his apologies for not being able to attend. I think Mr. Allen mentioned he was also out, but he spoke also of his support of both applications, and I think he was agreeing with you from afar, no, not officially. Lastly, the city has hired a new permit tech. We're, we have a tremendous volume of building permit applications. This spring, we fired an additional permit specialist to help with the volume. Hopefully, that will, that'll take hold. Keegan Bachhorst is his name, from Colorado. And the city is also currently recruiting Arini's successor, because there was no replacing Arini. We are in the middle of that recruitment, and are getting a lot of good qualified applicants for that, and we're hoping to bring a new planner aboard, probably in early July or early to mid-July. With that, Mr. Chair, I mean, Amber, have I forgotten anything from your perspective? Okay, with that, we'll yield back to any commissioner comments.
Commissioners, any comments? Motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Got a motion, a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Good night.
Good night. Thank you very much, have a good one.
Good night. Thank you, Chris, again, as always.
Thank you.
Amber, too.